Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to go ahead and ask that our clerk please call the roll.
DM is so short. Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and ask that Councilmember Fulcher please lead us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. There's a time set aside for people to speak to the city council in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except those issues subject to a public hearing. And we have one person who has signed up to speak this evening. So when you're invited to come up and speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area of residence. The timer will then be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes to speak. Go ahead and put the timer up. And the person who has signed up to speak is Harvey Tattle. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
As you know, these right over here, they're putting up new apartments. You've seen them on 149th and 179th. Well, there's a stop sign right here, and it's 27 and a half feet from the stop sign till you can even see around the corner cars coming. And now they put trees in there, which makes it even worse. If you're driving your 1964 Jaguar XKE that has a 12-foot hood, by the time the driver gets to be able to see, the hood's going to be out in the middle of the street. I almost got hit by a policeman on that corner, the north corner, when the hedge was there because the car coming from the south stopped. Oh, he's a nice guy. He's going to let me pull out. I didn't see the policeman racing down there with lights and no siren over that hedge. Oh, and you need to put up no parking signs on both sides of the street.
And the fence.
Because it's only one here, one here in the left turn lane. If they park there, you're not going to get through. And when your car is over the sidewalk, cars are the landscapers with the trailer making a left from the south, won't even be able to come around the corner. Okay, get your shuttle out.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll have.
Did you say you wanted to put some kind of fence?
The fence is up now.
Yep, we got the fence. Thank you. We'll have somebody from staff take a look at it. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item will be announcements and presentations. Item 5.1, Evergreen Health Monroe 2025, state of the hospital with Lisa LaPlante and Megan Worsing. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you, council members, for having us today. I am Lisa LaPlante, Chief Administrative Officer, Evergreen Health Monroe. This is Megan Worsing, our Chief Nursing Officer. We just want to give a status of the hospital. We'd like to do this at least every six months if we could. Just so much activity going on at the hospital. We want to keep the community informed, so. Next slide, if you could. All right, as we go along, if there's any questions, please let us know. So, we are fortunate to be part of the Evergreen Health system, but it's really important to know that we are two separate public hospital districts. So there's Evergreen Health Monroe, which is actually Snohomish County Public Hospital District Number One. You can see in the teal there, that is our district. It's actually bigger than the state of Rhode Island that I grew up in. I have to say that every time. And then below in the green, you see our affiliate, Evergreen Health in Kirkland. So two public hospitals neighboring each other really came together to serve our communities in a way that is the most efficient as we possibly can, so systemizing. But it's important to know that we are two separate public hospital districts, separate finances, separate unions, separate contracts, all of that. We just work really closely together. Next slide. All right. So the benefits of a public hospital district. We are your community hospital here in Monroe. We are Evergreen Health Monroe, but as you see, we go from all the way from Snohomish all the way out to Index, a big district. Local control, it's really important. We are not part of a big system, a national system. We are your local community hospital. We are governed by a local board, five community members that are elected officials. They serve a six-year term. That's a big commitment. Some of our board members have been on for more than 30 years. That's how committed they are. We do get funding, just like the school and other areas. Our property tax dollars fund the future of the district, and we're able to tell a story now where we are able to use those funds more responsibly than ever before in our history. So with some of our growth, we'll be able to kind of go through that story with you. Next slide. So these are our elected commissioners. We have five commissioners. Karen Gom is our board chair, and they serve us, like I said, for a six-year term. Our newest commissioner has been appointed, Judith Coletta. She is on the actual Snohomish City Council as well, so she just got appointed in this past month. Next slide. So as a system, we come together. We serve a purpose together. We have a shared mission, vision, and values. Those values are very important to us. We live by them every day, but one of the biggest ones is excellence in quality and safety. If you go to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk about Evergreen Health. So Evergreen Health, for five straight years, has been in the top 50 hospitals in the nation. So if you think about that, so out of 6,093 hospitals, top 50 for quality and safety in the nation. Six straight years of being a leapfrog grade A facility, so that's out of 346 hospitals in the nation that get that grade. CMS five-star rating, so Medicare five-star rating, nine straight years in a row, only 281 hospitals of those 6,093 get that, and you can see Evergreen Health is in the top. So we are really proud to affiliate with Evergreen Health. We align our quality, our safety, our physicians, everything that we do, we align together, and so proud to be in agreement with Evergreen Health in Kirkland. Next slide. So I think everyone's heard the state of hospitals, not only in Washington but throughout the nation, right? We continue to get cuts since COVID. That was a hard thing to come out of. You can see, this is just from, this is the Washington State Hospital Association, just from the hospitals in Washington, you can see the losses from COVID. Huge, and they continue. We're trying to turn it around, so you can see some improvement over time, but we're dealing with, from '21 to '23, wages went up 21%, and that's a low number. We've actually, in Monroe, have increased much more than that. Travelers during that time were 65%. When you have travelers, you're paying two to three times as much for travelers. Supplies have gone up 12%. Total care costs have gone up 18%. Our non-complicated patients, so length of stay continues to increase. We don't get more reimbursement for those length of stay, so hospitals are really suffering. We have a great story to tell. Oh, question.
You can go ahead and complete your.
Okay. In Monroe, we have a really great story to tell because of our affiliation, our growth, the providers, specialties that we've been able to infiltrate into our district. We are one of two hospitals in the state that are actually profitable. It is Evergreen Health Monroe and Children's Hospital. So that is a big statement in itself, and we are very proud of that. It could change quickly, but we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can. We look at every expense. With Evergreen Health, we try to combine our services, things like billing, compliance, quality, safety, infection control, we combine together, and we have dual efforts. So we have a lot of savings that we get that way in our growth. And going to Epic, which is a universal electronic medical record, has helped us to really be able to improve the care and the access in Monroe.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Travelers are what?
Travelers are, so when, during COVID, staffing got very difficult. A lot of people in healthcare actually decided to go for a traveler job instead of working at a hospital. They went and worked for a traveler agency.
Contracted agency workers.
They go like three months here and three months there.
They typically have 13-week assignments, yes.
They have the option after three months to, maybe they have the option to stay another two months or three.
Yep, we can extend if needed, yeah.
So there's a fair amount of per diem involved in hiring those people?
Not so much per diem, but there is, the wages to pay those types of workers are two to three times what we pay our permanent workers.
Well, sometimes if they don't live in the area and they're traveling, you don't have to pay per diem.
Yeah, so all of that goes through the agency. We kind of play that flat rate, right? And all that happens on the back end, but it is.
Exactly. Living, all of that kind of stuff, right? Exactly. Yep, you bet. So as you can see, like our reimbursements continue to decline, costs, as with everyone, continues to go up. Hospitals are really in a difficult position, but because we're going to tell the story of Evergreen Health Monroe and why we're in the position we're at now, and we're very fortunate because of our growth. So I'll turn it over to Megan and go to the next slide to talk about really our volumes.
Yeah. Slide? Okay, great. Thanks, Lisa. So I know this is a busy slide, but this really in a snapshot does tell the story of the last few years and the growth that we have seen, really pretty exponentially as we've gone through COVID and beyond. So what we're talking about is population growth in this area. I know all of us, you know, being residents out here, we see that. We know what's happening in our area, homes going up. And, you know, we saw that district map when we think about the catchment area that we have, which is quite large, as Lisa mentioned. It goes from Snohomish all the way up to Index and slightly beyond. We have folks that come quite a ways down the Highway 2 corridor just to receive care, but want to talk about a few key points, which is population growth in our areas. The few starred areas that you can see here are Monroe, Sultan, as well as the Clearview and Maltby areas are all growing at a rate higher than the general population growth. And so that's, again, I think something we know anecdotally just with what we're seeing with housing developments and things of that nature. And then when you look at some of these graphs, so our inpatient patient days over the last five years has significantly grown. Our emergency department volumes have significantly grown. The Monroe urgent care has been the fastest-growing site of all the Evergreen Health urgent cares. And then our surgery department as well. You can see the growth that's happened there. And so really, all of this is how do we continue to meet the needs of this very growing, active community, provide the services that are so crucial to this community, and continue to make sure that we're expanding so that folks don't have to travel for that care and can receive care close to home? We know that when people do that, there's better healthcare outcomes, right? When you have to travel further, people tend to put off healthcare. They may not seek it out as much. When we can do it locally, it's just a lot easier for people all the way around. The one thing I'll add about surgery as well, we did add a Mako robot. I think we mentioned that the last time we came, but really cutting edge for a hospital of our size to have a robot that assists in cutting-edge surgeries for joint, total joint replacement, so knees and hips, that really gets improved patient outcomes. So really proud of that as we've expanded on our orthopedic joint program. Let's go to the next slide, please. So then just a little bit more about our growth and access to talk about the really awesome partnership that we have with the Evergreen Health Medical Group. Lisa mentioned that partnership we have with physicians, and that has been just a crucial aspect to the growth that we have had, as they have been a wonderful partner in ensuring we can bring out these specialties to Monroe and keep a finger on the pulse of what the community needs. So we opened our cardiology clinic in October of '23. That first upper-right graph, as you can see, the growth of that clinic, we clearly had a need to have cardiology services out here in Monroe on an outpatient basis. So that has really expanded, and then we're looking to further expand cardiac testing. We opened our ear, nose, and throat clinic in the fall of '24, so we're not quite a year into that. And that lower right-hand graph is the growth that you can see for that clinic. That's representative of one provider right now. Our cardiology clinic has four providers out here, and we're looking to even expand it further just for some perspective. So again, that program has really needed that, the access for patients. We've expanded gastroenterology services, and we'll be doing upper GI scopes coming up here soon. We have a second general surgeon that started in January of this year. He is also performing GI procedures as well as general surgery procedures. We have a urologist that will be coming out this fall. We're getting all prepared and buying all the capital needs for that physician to make sure he can perform all the procedures and surgeries in the OR. As well as neurology, we have plans for them to come this fall as well into our clinic. So again, huge focus on how do we get the specialty care close to home and really make sure that we're serving this very much-growing community needs. Diagnostic imaging as well is just another modality that naturally grows when these other services grow, and so we need to make sure we can continue to be on that path to support all of these other services for diagnostic capabilities. So we've seen that growth across CT, MRI, ultrasound. We're also working on a second CT machine to have redundancy in that area. Just quickly to mention, we get a lot of traumas in our hospital here, being more, a little more rural, lots of folks that come out to recreate up the Highway 2 corridor, and so we see quite a bit of trauma patients into our emergency department. Next slide. I think, I'll hand it back over to you. Yeah?
All right. So financial stewardship. So as I was mentioning before, we do everything to make sure that we keep our expenses low. We review every physician that becomes available, and we've really been successful the past couple of years. Again, a trifecta of things, going on to a new electronic medical records system, Epic, the partnership with the medical group. The volume growth has just been significant. When I started at the organization in 2010, we may have had a days' cash on hand, and maybe, but now we are well over 200 days' cash on hand. So that means we could exist for 200 days plus without receiving any revenue. And so for me, that is a big deal because we do collect tax dollars, and being responsible with those tax dollars and being able to invest them back into not only our staff but our community to grow and increase access. The facility is an aging facility that we'll talk about in a minute, but being able to, after many, many years of absolutely no capital being invested in the organization, this year, 9.5 million in capital being invested. And we're growing, and so trying to grow in place, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But you can see the results. We are far above our budget. We are really not being out of the park when it comes to financially, and, but we're being very, very responsible with those dollars. We know those are our taxpayers' dollars. This hospital is the community's hospital, and so we're very, we take that very seriously. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
What are the numbers in red?
Red is previous year. Previous year.
Are you, I think you might be looking at the above. Those are variances.
One, one, three, thirty-one, what do they represent?
Yep. So those are actually, in those areas, that's total operating loss, and so for me, those actually represent a little bit of a variance down, but overall, year-to-date, you can see the net income at the bottom is in the black. So those red are minuses, basically.
So within that month, we may have not have hit our surgery volumes, but overall, year-to-date, we're doing well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Next slide.
Yeah, so as Lisa mentioned, just really thinking about growth and what do we do at this point and what are we, what's our current state right now? We really are a facility at capacity, and so how do we make sure we continue to grow right now and meet the needs? And so we've been doing a lot of work with our leadership team and looking at how we do this as successfully as possible. So just thinking about current state, our emergency department, we're currently seeing about 60 to 80 patients a day. It's a 14-bed ED. If you were to design a brand-new ED today, it certainly wouldn't look like the one we have, right? And that part of the building is actually 100 years old. It was the part of the original building that was built in 1925. So when you think about just general upkeep and even new projects or expansion, it is naturally very difficult to do in those areas. Our inpatient unit, which has 26 private beds, we're seeing that growth continue to increase, and when those beds are full, we don't have places to put patients, we have to transfer them out, right? We can't keep them in Monroe. So how do we expand access to acute care beds for inpatients? Again, I mentioned that aging infrastructure, it's a very old building, and so our facilities team is awesome. We have a great manager. They do a ton of work. They're busy all the time, but when you think about, you know, a project on a 100-year-old house, right? All the things that you would run into when you start digging, and we have those same challenges. Patient flow challenges, just like I mentioned, if you were to design new aspects of a healthcare or hospital area, it wouldn't look like what we have today. So we've really had to, you know, design workarounds and be efficient with what we have, and the team has done an amazing job, but you reach a point where that only gets you so far, so we have to think about what can we do to make sure we're improving that as much as we can. And then expansion limitations, there's just only so much. When we talk about those multi-specialties, we only have so much room, physical room, to create space for new specialists coming out and clinic rooms and things of that nature. So all things that we're considering and how do we make sure that we're looking for, towards the next 10 to 20 years for this community and being really thoughtful about it. Next slide.
All right. So we have launched a master facility planning process. It launched early 2023, so initial assessment was done. We looked at our data, so what are the needs in the community? Not only provider needs, but just different specialties, what are the growth potentials in our area? Not only within our district, we are now capturing beyond our district. It's interesting, we go to certain places and they talk about non-trestle healthcare, and we support that. But so we are really having to plan for the future, and what does that look like? So if anyone who's been part of a master facility planning, it is a long, drawn-out process. I like results. It takes a long time, right? So you're planning six, seven years out. So we've started that process. We did what we call a charrette. We completed that in November 2023. We are in the pre-design, did all the pre-design process for what does it look like if we were to do a replacement hospital here? The biggest challenge, when you think about growth in an organization such as a hospital, is how do you continue to exist as you are while you're growing, right? And so you can't shut down the emergency department, you can't shut down surgery. So how do we plan that while we continue to grow in place? And so as you can see, going through that whole process, the recommendation was a phased approach. Grow in place, geographical access, so making sure within our district, because we are not just Monroe, we are beyond Monroe, right? We're the Snohomish County Public Hospital District. How are we representing throughout our district? And then design a replacement hospital. Next slide. So the phases we have come up with, phase one, continue to grow in place. I think you're going to take this slide.
Yeah, that's fine. So we know that we have to do something today, right? For all the reasons that we just talked about, the growth that we're seeing, the needs of the community and what we're hearing. So phase one is looking at an ED expansion. We have a current project that has just kicked off. We have board approval, so we're really excited about this. It's a temporary measure, and so we are looking to add three to four rooms in our emergency department, because unfortunately, right now, we're having to see some patients in the hallways when we get that busy. And while our teams are still in a great job and providing great care, it's not ideal for patients, right? I think we can all appreciate that. We wouldn't want to be in the hallway for care, so we're excited about that. And then looking to other things, what are some other areas that we can expand in within our current footprint? We are looking at acute care beds, the possibility of reopening our critical care unit, expanding our progressive care beds. That would be four more beds that we're looking at to bring online, so we're excited about that project as well. Our laboratory, we have a new analyzer that needs to come online, and so we have a big project there. Second CT scanner, again, that redundancy that we need, we have one today, and when it goes down or needs maintenance, that puts us on stroke or trauma divert. So we want to make sure that we're not in that situation, that we have backup, we have redundancy to take care of folks, even if we have to take our other machine offline for a period of time. And then other surface light expansions, like our stress echo as part of cardiac testing. Phase two is how do we look, and all these are really kind of happening altogether simultaneously as we continue through this master facility planning process. Expanding access in the district, what does that look like? Where are some areas that are possibly more underserved, and we could help to look to expand and serve communities better? So for some examples, looking at the city of Snohomish further into Sultan, we do have a clinic out there, but we know those needs are growing. What does that look like, and how can we support that? And then phase three, as Lisa mentioned, is looking towards the future of that 10 to 20 year, what does that really look like for a hospital, future state? What do we need this to look like as our community continues to grow, and what are those services we need to be planning for now? So as she mentioned, we've completed the charrette and the pre-design. We are about, gosh, a year and a half into over, you're almost closing in on two years into this process. It's hard to believe it's been that long, but really getting some good momentum going about how, what do we need to do to look for the future? So.
And we're trying to figure out financing. So because of the success of the hospital currently, we feel that we can offer a lot and put a lot out there to be able to invest in the future, but there could potentially be an ask down the road. That's up to our board, right? So that decision has not been made yet. Next slide. So our Sky River Building, so that's the medical office building where the eye clinic and the ortho and general surgery and primary care, urgent care, city of Monroe is located. We are actually purchasing that building this month, which is a big deal for us. The hospital has never owned that building. It was originally built by seven providers, and so us purchasing that building really gives us local control. We really need to make sure our specialty clinics were bringing neurology in, urology in. We need space for those providers, and so this affords us that opportunity. It also buys us time to evaluate the future state, so it gives us more room and allow for hospital expansion, so replacement hospital with construction. If we didn't own that building, we'd be very confined into what we could grow into, so it really helps us with our planning. We also, it's not on here, but we are about to purchase the land on the other side of Puget Sound Kidney Center. We're actually repurchasing the land back that we sold. So that's another acre over there that we're purchasing, just on the edge of the hospital property line, so we're excited about that. That's going to help us with our expansion. The ED expansion that Megan was talking about, we, so currently seeing 60-plus patients a day. There are days we see 80-plus patients through our emergency department, 50 to 60 through the urgent care. That's compared to during COVID, we had 20, maybe 20 coming through a day. So that's growth, a lot of growth, and so I attribute that to amazing staff, quality, safety. People are seeing a change in the care they're receiving at our local hospital, so. Next slide. Our slogan, the distance between your home and your healthcare matters. We know what it's like to drive not only from here to either Kirkland or Everett, but never mind from Index, especially during a holiday weekend. So we really feel it's important to give everything we can locally and, of course, transfer to a higher level of care as appropriate. And next slide. Just opening up for questions, we have here just our district and all the current services that we provide, but we'll open it up to questions of the council.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
No questions, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Yeah, thank you guys also for the presentation. I think Monroe's really lucky to have you. It's incredible to hear. The volumes, it looks like, have generally quadrupled since 2020, and population in the district has grown 3, 3 or 4%. Do you guys, is that mostly attributable, do you think, to reputation and the quality of care? Or is, okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Big turnaround. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. What is going on in the birthing, the old birthing area?
Yeah, it is still currently a shelter space at the, at the current time, and we're currently using it for education. We have a clinical educator that joined our team last year. We're doing simulations and things like that to keep our clinical teams up to speed, but it is still a shelved unit and has potential to be a clinical area again if we needed it to.
And we are, I think I understand the question, we are evaluating OB and the future of OB in our district. I don't think it'll be anytime very soon, but we realize that. I don't think it'll be anytime very soon, but we realize that at some point, we're delivering babies now in our emergency department, so we realize that need.
Yep.
Great. Yeah, I'm very thankful that you're our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter.
Thank you for coming tonight. It is quite a privilege for us as a community to have a place where I can look that, you know, my kids were born there, I was born there, my dad was born there. The history that is there and the care that we've gotten in generations of our family over the years. It was very cool to hear you guys brag about your placement with all the hospitals in the nation. That is, that's good stuff. You should just keep on tooting that horn, because good job for both of you. Congratulations.
You have a wonderful team.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Echoing a lot of the same sentiment, just really appreciate you guys coming and giving the update too. I am a data nut though, and so I, and I was trying to find it while we were sitting here, because I remember sitting through a presentation, it was during COVID, we were online, and looking at the same stats prior to COVID. And you guys said the care and everything, I could not agree more. I think it's also probably people feeling like they can go into the hospital again.
Absolutely.
Yes, because I remember seeing statistics where it was the exact opposite curve. So it would just be interesting to see, yeah, to see those numbers compared prior to 2020.
Especially with preventative care.
Yeah.
So that's what we're trying to do with the specialties, is bringing those specialties so people are getting that preventative care, not having to travel for it. Yeah, big deal.
Getting back to some of the levels that we had pre-COVID.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, it's with that, thank you.
And some of that was still less pre-COVID, so it just depends on the area and the unit, but yeah.
I was trying to find the presentation, I couldn't find, my search capabilities were not.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you so much. Both of you are very, very skilled presenters. Really enjoy listening to your easily understandable, just, it's a pleasure to listen to you speak. Everything is very easy to understand, the slides were really good, I just appreciate it. I also appreciate the fiscal responsibility of the board, and that's just incredible. Some of the stats you threw at us tonight were amazing, and I really appreciate that. And on a personal note, I wanted to just give you some feedback. My 87- and 88-year-old parents moved to Monroe about a year and a half ago. They have been overwhelmed, in a good way, by the care available here, they cannot believe it, and they require quite a bit of care. They've both gone to the Walkin Clinic, they've been able to get, you know, a lot of services here that required them at home in California to travel quite a distance, and it's just been, you know, I've been so filled with pride just being able to say, yep, all of that is here, and they've been treated with utmost care. So thank you so much for being here, really appreciate you.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker. No, let's go with Councilmember Fisher.
You guys are amazing.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say the same thing, so thanks for the presentation, a lot of great information in there. Good job using your money wisely, is so obviously important for all of us up here as well. So totally appreciate it, keep it up. You guys are always very professional and looking to the future, so really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and for me, you know, you take a look at the map right there, and it's something that I didn't realize until I was listening to a story on the radio probably about five years ago now. There, you know, I've heard the term food deserts before, that's, those are neighborhoods where there's no grocery store, right? You have the same thing with hospital deserts, like healthcare deserts, and as you take a look at their service area there, there aren't any other medical facilities out there. If you're gonna have a kid, you know, and you live up, you know, near a Sky Comish or something, this is the closest place to come. So I think that we, I know that we are really fortunate here in our community to have a public hospital district that's there to help anybody in need. You know, we imagine Monroe talks about Monroe being a safe place for all, where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. Part of having that safety and that sense of belonging and that sense of having a home is being able to get your healthcare right here. So, you know, for me, I think that it is a true blessing, we're very fortunate to have the hospital district here, have the hospital here, and I thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. So thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda today is item 5.2, this is a 2025 legislative recap with Luke Esser and Jim Hedrick.
Didn't know you were gonna rearrange the furniture for us, thank you, appreciate that. Jim Hedrick, Luke Esser, my esteemed colleague, great night to be in the beautiful city of Monroe. Just came through 15 weeks of a legislative session. Our PowerPoint is not gonna have a stethoscope shaped like a heart, but we will hopefully give you some good information and give you some of the things that the legislature did this past year that are tools for local governments. I know you were just talking about public safety, so we'll be talking about that in a bit, housing, rent control, the budget scenario, the economy, and et cetera. First thing, just a real top-level overview, the long session in the odd-numbered years is 15 weeks long. The one that we will be going into in 2026 is about eight and a half weeks, the supplemental session. The legislature passed about 1,900 bills, 422 of them passed and were signed into law. The governor did one veto, just to comment on that. 422 bills passed is about par for the course. I think the average is about 435 bills passed in one session.
Okay, just a second. So Councilmember Gamble and then Councilmember Scarborough.
I'm just trying to.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Scarborough, was it just a microphone?
Which bill was vetoed?
Oh.
It's the one that wasn't.
I think he was renaming, yeah, we'll come back to up.
House Bill 1108, creating a task force on housing cost driver analysis.
Something tells me you can live without that, okay. Do want to say one thing about this, this is Governor Ferguson's, obviously, his first session. Just comparatively, other governors have vetoed more than one bill. Governor Gregoire used the veto pin pretty widely, certainly Governor Locke did. Governor Inslee was very sparing with the veto pin, so I mean, this is just kind of telling that Governor Ferguson may not be too wild with his veto pin, only vetoing one bill. Usually, in the first year of a thing, the governors want to rewrite the legislation that comes across their desk as they're reading it, but not this guy. So just comparatively, I mean, he was relatively mild. He did the nine bills that were personally vetoed, and we'll get you a list of those bills too, Councilmember Scarborough, but most of them were double amendments, pretty technical in nature. Do you want to bring July 27th to your attention? Most bills that passed this session will take effect July 27th, but four bills that had a specific date in them. So most of the tax bills, like the gas tax, just went into effect July 1st with the start of the new biennium, but most bills are gonna go into effect July 27th, and you'll be seeing the news, and they'll tell you all about all the bills that are taking effect. But if you want a list of bills that are going to affect July 27th, we can supply you with that. Any questions, or I guess you'll raise your flag.
They'll raise their flag.
They'll raise their flag, okay, okay, yeah, that's the mayor's job, okay. Looking at the, we're gonna look at this one, biennial operating budget. It spends $77.9 billion for context, that is still an 8.2% increase over the current biennium that we just ended on June 30th of $71.9 billion. So just to put it into context, we're gonna talk a little more about this, but I mean, they cut $6 billion, they increased revenue by $9 billion over four years, and there's still 8.2% increase over the current biennium. A lot of that has been driven by collective bargaining agreements, by enrollments in K-12 and in medical assistance. That's what's driving a lot of that number over the top, over the maintenance level, if you will. As you well know and read into the papers, the session began with a daunting $16 billion budget deficit, depending on who you talked to, it might have been $10 billion. Just to talk about that $16 billion, they do budget now for over a four-year period by law. They also assume collective bargaining agreements that were negotiated by the governor's office prior to when session starts, that's collective bargaining agreements with the, I think it's now 29 different bargaining units with the state employees and other collective bargaining agreements, but that number is how they, depending on who you talk to, is $16 to $10 billion, depending on what assumptions you make for spending. The new operating budget includes $6 billion in cuts and $9 billion in revenue, that's over four years, and I just talked about that. It does fully fund the state employee collective bargaining agreements. You might recall that at least Senate Democrats were considering furloughs, furloughing state employees one day out of the month. Governor Ferguson, early on, supported that. A lot of the state employee labor unions were not in favor of that, along with the discussions about the collective bargaining agreements. So there are no furloughs in this, the collective bargaining agreements were fully funded. A lot of talk about maybe one biennium not fully funding collective bargaining agreements and doing like a cash bonus to state employees to kind of compress the salary schedule for one biennium. That did not happen. By the by, you may not know this, through the collective bargaining law in Washington State, it is collectively bargained with unions, with the governor's office, or what's called the OPR, with the public relay, or what am I saying, the public, what's it called? Office of Financial Management, with their collective bargaining unit. They do collectively bargain these out, they are agreed upon prior to when session starts, and they can be only voted up or down by the legislature. The legislature cannot change collective bargaining agreements, they're either up or down. So just one thing that you need to know, we've been, had this collective bargaining bill for about 20 years now, so we've been doing it that way. Continuing concerns going forward is the revenue forecast, which I'm gonna talk about in detail in a moment, and of course, what we call the BBB at Olympia, the Big Beautiful Bill, that was just passed by Congress and signed by the president, looking at reductions in federal Medicaid cuts, I was just talking to your previous presenters at the hospital about the impacts of the Medicaid cuts that are coming down from the feds on our hospital communities here in Washington State, so. Next slide, please, thank you. Let's talk about those tax increases. This was probably the most daunting discussion in Olympia. A lot of bills were flying around. A wealth tax was put out there at first, which was highly, a lot of blowback from the technology sector and the tech industry about taxing people over a certain amount of income. If you recall, Governor Ferguson took that off the table pretty much in a press conference about midway through session. So they took that off the table, which did not help them with their problem statement on the budget. They continued to talk about other tax increases and talking about a tax increase level of about $17 or $18 billion. Governor came in right after that press conference, right after that, four-hour Ways and Means Hearing, and said that that revenue level was too risky. But they did end up doing $9 billion, that's close to what the Governor Ferguson called for, he wanted $9 billion over four years. So they did increase revenue about $9.4 billion over four years, and it's pretty much across the board. The existing BNO tax increase is on both the manufacturing and retailing sectors. Manufacturing's right currently at .484, retailing's at .471, but they go up to a half a percent, services to 2.1. So it's across the board, everybody in BNO, you might recall, Governor Inslee wanted it just on the manufacturing sector to raise $20 billion, which is a huge increase. This is a much more spread-out law that they passed in House Bill 2081. There are new retail sales taxes on many services, mostly in the tech sector. I just put that in there, especially in the tech sector, because that was kind of the trade-off that they did for pooh-poohing the wealth tax, if you will, the 1% tax on folks making over a certain amount of money, nicotine products and other things, they did put it on cigarettes again, but that's expected to generate $2.6 billion over the next four years, that's Senate Bill 5814. Additional increase on capital gains, they repeal certain BNO tax preferences, this is just a very tip of the iceberg list, but insurance producers, title agents, that's expected not to produce that much, $385 million over four years is not actually that much in the grand scheme of things, easy for me to say, because I'm not in those sectors, but I mean, that is going to be a cost increase if you're buying a home or if you're wanting to insure something. The Tesla tax, hard fought to House Bill 2077. You might recall, a few years ago, Tesla actually got a bill where they usurped the franchise tax. If you buy a car in Washington State, it has to be delivered in-state. Tesla got the law changed that you can actually buy a Tesla and have it delivered from out of state and avoid some taxes. So this is where they come, this is on all zero emission vehicles, it's not just Teslas, but that was another hard-fought bill that they went over. And liquor, if you like liquor, or you're producing liquor, you're storing liquor, you're selling liquor, you're marketing liquor, your taxes are going up either for your license fee or your permit fee or your storage fee. There are, even if you are a small distiller or a small brewery, say here in Monroe, you are paid more than just one liquor license. If you are selling it, storing it, marketing it, or selling it to anybody or distributing it, you have a separate license or permit for all four of those activities. So 5786 hits are in-state distilleries, in-state breweries, and in-state wineries, especially hard. What they did not do was AWC's top priority, I wanted to bring this to your attention, was House Bill 2049. That was to raise the property tax levy lid from 1% to 3% or up to 3%. There was some talk about their raising it up by CPI and by population up to 3%, but that's essentially, that did not happen. That bill got the, one beat the record, it got the most public blowback of any bill in Washington State history, which is much easier to do with the computers now, but there were like 14,000 people who signed in against raising the property tax levy lid to 3%. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. City of Monroe did not take a position on that, but many cities did, and that's been a top priority for AWC for years. The June revenue forecast, state has quarterly revenue forecasts, updates all the time. We are in a uncertain economy right now, just in case you haven't heard or noticed. State economist, this was just accepted on, back on the first week of, or the June 20th of this year. What the state economist is worried about is the rise in US tariffs and the retaliation from other countries that we're hearing about in the news all the time. Inflation is slowing, but is continuing. Slow reduction in interest rates, the Fed is supposed to be two more times this year, they might reduce it one more time. It is a Trump, Chair of the Fed right now, a Trump-appointed Chair of the Fed, they are outgoing, and the new chair will also be appointed by the president. But the reduction in interest rates, there might be one more reduction before this year is ended, or they probably will not do it at all. Big talk about reductions in federal spending, we just talked about that a bit. Employment cuts, we are certainly seeing that on the federal level, we've seen that with Microsoft with 9,000 layoffs just last week, so that's heading both the private and public sectors, and then I put the Iran-Israel conflict up there. If that were to heat up and Iran were to shut down the Strait of Hormuz, where I believe 80% of all domestic oil, or excuse me, 80% of the world's oil supply comes through the Strait of Hormuz, that could have a significant effect on oil prices. I put these boring bullets in here, over here, just to show you on the bienniums of what happens, and each one is significant actually. For the 2325 biennium, and that's the one that just ended on June 30th, state general fund revenue increased by $70 million on a $67 billion base. State general fund revenue increased by $70 million on a $67 billion base. That is significant because of the unrestricted reserves, that last one. The state only let about $225 million in reserves. The governor got them $25 million more in reserves, and his 70 brings it up to about 320. So that unrestricted reserve, which is is money that that could be spent if the state goes goes finds itself in a deficit deficit position, that keeps them out of a special session, at least for the short term. And you might recall, Governor Ferguson said he was not going to call the legislature back, but had that gone in a very negative direction, say they got the 446 billion dollar or million-dollar decrease in the 2325 biennium, he probably would have had to call the legislature back. So for the 2527 biennium, which we are in just now, starting July 1st and for the next two years, it decreased 446 million. That's on a $75 billion base. And then for the four years out, for the next 2729 biennium, 638 million on an $80 billion base. I just bring this all up because that is now, to put it all in context for you, they cut $6 billion, they raised $9 billion, and they are now, as we are sitting here in this room, a billion dollars out of bed with another budget shortfall when they go back in in January, at least with this snapshot in time. There are two more revenue forecasts. There's one in September, there's one in December that are coming up, which will change all of the all of these numbers. But this is just a way to tell you that the economy is slowing down, and the state revenues are going in the wrong direction, even when they go back in in January after having done cuts, after having done very large tax increases. Next slide, I think, is, we got to have Luke take over here.
And I will take the baton. Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Jim's done a very great job of exploring the operating budget. State has three main budgets. The operating budget, the transportation budget, and the capital budget. I'll start with the transportation budget, which while it was under stress, wasn't on in the same magnitude of stress as the operating budget was, but still it faced a budget deficit of approximately a billion dollars heading into the last legislative session. And many different ideas were proposed to deal with that. One that was explored and not adopted was what's called the RUC, the Road Usage Charge, which is a concept of a vehicle miles traveled fee to people, and that was that was not adopted, and the state ultimately went with the the usual mechanism used to fund transportation projects in the state, which is the gas tax. And so a six-cent increase in the gas tax was adopted. That's certainly happened many times in state history. The the one new feature of the gas tax for this year was, for the first time, it was indexed such that the entire state gas tax will now raise annually by 2% compounded going forward without any further votes of the legislature. So that will be an attempt by the legislature to keep pace with inflation, with the gas tax revenues going forward. Now, obviously, we had a project, which is always our top-tier project, always top of mind for us in terms of transportation, hashtag finish 522. And there were concerns very early in the session when the House published their proposed transportation budget that pushed the majority of funding for the SR522 widening project to to what we refer to as the dreaded future category. And they put they put out spreadsheets that show how much money is allocated per biennium for projects through the end of the 29 to 31 biennium, and then they have the word "future," which can mean any time between July 1st, 2031, and the 12th of never. So it's always a bad idea to see your project funded in the future category. Fortunately, the the mayor was able to carve some time out to come down and testify in person in Olympia to express some concerns. And in particular, though, our entire legislative delegation was was supportive. Rep. Low and Senator Gaynor, in particular, were strong supporters of full and expedited funding for 522. And as as a reminder of the importance of that, the current level of of funding is that the design and engineering and right-of-way work is what's currently being being funded and being undertaken. And that's important because we can't get a good, solid estimate for the construction budget, and we won't have the the level of engineering and design work done to be ready when the state next does a large, a new revenue transportation budget to fund the construction phase of the SR522 widening project, which is, I believe, estimated to be north of $200 million. And so we need to to pin that down, and the longer we took to do the right-of-way and design and engineering work, the longer that would postpone the ability to move forward with the construction phase. So that was, it was definitely a win to see that remain fully funded and on time. And so that that should be completed by the end of the 2027, 2029 biennium, the design, engineering, and right-of-way work on the SR522 widening project.
Thank you. We have a question. Councilmember Scarborough.
Increase in extent.
Could we hit his microphone?
I produce per gallon.
Yes.
How it's.
There we go.
Where does that come down with the electric cars? How do they, what what system do they have for electric cars to pay for, work on roads, et cetera?
There's an annual fee for electrical vehicles. I don't remember what it is offhand. And that one of the reasons that, well, there are two main reasons why the state has found itself in a budget deficit, the transportation budget, is number one, electric cars don't use any gasoline. And number two, even the cars that still use gasoline are getting much better mileage these days. So they're they're using fewer miles per gallon of fuel than than previously, which has put the the system under under stress to fund. And construction costs for everything are going up, including transportation projects. So the, but to circle back to your your original question, they do pay, electrical vehicles do pay an annual fee in the state to to for their component of supporting the transportation system.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions before we proceed? All right.
Next up, we'll we'll turn to the capital budget, which was not under a particular stress. There certainly have been more flush capital budgets, but this was the 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 least stressful by far of the three major state budgets. Fortunately, it did include one of the priorities for the city, $360,000 to replace the synthetic turf at Monroe Rotary Field, six years past its life expectancy. And we understand that 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 project can can begin as early as the start of next year. So that's a a great, a great win. Another instance where all of our local legislators were supportive, but for this project in particular, wanted to note that Reps. Steele and Burnett were strong supporters, and Rep. Steele is in a particularly strong position on the capital budget, as he's the ranking Republican on the House Capital Budget Committee, so in a good position to help on several capital budget projects. Also, we'll note that though it wasn't a city priority, the Wagner Performing Arts Center restrooms project did receive $443,000 as well. So a couple of nice projects for for the Monroe community in the biennial capital budget that was adopted. Next slide, thank you very much. Wanted to hit a couple of issue areas, large prominent issue areas, in addition to the to the budgets. And for for quote-unquote "just being one bill," House Bill 2015 certainly took a disproportionate share of attention in this year's legislative session, somewhat akin to, you may remember a few years ago, we had the the Blake Fix Bills. There was a State Supreme Court decision, name of Blake, that basically threw out the state's drug possession criminal law. It had to be replaced, and that took a process of a couple of years to to get settled. House Bill 2015 largely came about because Governor Ferguson prioritized the hiring of new police officers and the the state funding, finding funds to help hire new police officers. And there were several different bills introduced, but 2015 was the one that ultimately had the momentum and and was adopted. It has two major components to it. The first is a a statewide local law enforcement grant program that will actually only run for three years. So it it's, it'll it'll end in 2028, but the the budget that Jim mentioned, the operating budget, included $100 billion for that state local law enforcement grant program. And it's actually very broad uses, though it was initially intended for the hiring and retention of police officers. It can be used for that, but it can also be used for peer counselors, behavioral health personnel working in co-response, plus even broader law enforcement and public safety efforts. So there's a lot of flexibility for how the the grant funds can be used. No guarantee that any community will receive the grant funds, though all are eligible to to apply for them. I will note that eligibility for the grants is predicated on city and county police and sheriff's offices, adopting certain policies and staffing plans and completing certain trainings. And some of that is is controversial because many of those are policies and procedures that cities don't, several cities and counties don't implement at the current time. So but nonetheless, they they must, in order to to apply for these, the new grant. The other prong of what 2015 does is a new local option, 0.1% sales tax. And it's worth mentioning, there are there are two existing similar local option sales tax. There's an existing 0.1% criminal justice sales tax that only counties can apply, can impose, though they have to share the revenues with cities. And I believe Snohomish County adopted that back in the 1990s. There's also an existing public safety sales tax of up to 0.3% that counties and cities can adopt. I believe Snohomish County voters rejected an option to do.
Twice.
Okay?
They rejected it twice.
So that that obviously not moving forward. That's worth mentioning because for to be eligible for the 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 state grant, a local jurisdiction must receive funding from either those two existing sources or this new 0.1% sales tax. Now, since Snohomish County did adopt that first prong, the criminal justice sales tax in the 1990s, and every city receives the share, City of Monroe does qualify in that in that respect. Another feature that's very interesting about the local option sales tax is that it's true of counties as well, but a city may only impose the new 0.1% sales tax councilmanically for the first three years until June 30th, 2028. And after that, it may only be imposed with voter approval. And so these two different aspects kind of, either you can look at it as work together or interrelated in in certain respects. We have provided an analysis of that, and and I'll just note that it's it's a blessing for us to have subject matter experts at our cities, like like Chief Jolly in in this slide and and Lance in the next one, where I'm going to talk about housing to help us deal with these these certain issues. So I'll just mention that right off the right off the bat. Next slide, please, for for housing, and I apologize for how busy this next slide is because we could easily spend several slides dealing with housing bills. It was one of the most prolific areas the legislature dealt with in 2025. And just hitting a few of the highlights here, 5148 was a bill that was a great concern to a lot of cities earlier in the legislation. What what that bill would have done in in one of its earlier forms, and it morphed and changed a lot during the legislative session, is that it would have required every single development regulation and housing element for a a city to be reviewed by the Department of Commerce for compliance with all state laws and and regulation. And that was a a concern both from the extent of local control being questioned to that degree, but also the Department of Commerce already has challenges getting their current workload done in in reasonable times and having every single city and county development regulation and housing element go through a process the Department of Commerce would have slowed things down considerably. Fortunately, by the end of session, what that bill did was it created a process whereby a city could voluntarily submit their housing regulations, housing elements and development regulations to Commerce for review, and Commerce could pick 10 jurisdictions in the state every year to basically do an audit of if they if they thought something was was worthy of deeper investigation. And so a much, much improved version of that ultimately passed. 5184, I won't spend any any time on exempt cities under 30. Obviously, we have other other clients that are concerned that it preempts local parking minimums, but not not a concern for the City of Monroe, at least for some considerable while. Lot splitting was an interesting issue in that it's been around for a couple of years now and actually had passed the House almost unanimously for two years in a row. And fortunately, that bill was was worked and modified by AWC and other stakeholders over the course of a couple of years because initially it it appeared that that bill would have turned basically unbuildable parcels into buildable parcels almost overnight with little consideration for features like critical areas and sensitive areas and things like that and and other factors as well. It became a much more palatable bill that basically requires an administrative review process for a lot splits by local jurisdictions, and so became much more, much more manageable. In a similar way, 5559, unit lot subdivisions, was created by AWC kind of as an alternative to the lot splitting bill involving, and I will really defer to Lance when I'm throwing around terms like unit lot subdivisions. But basically, it was a a way that the cities came forward with to try to address the same issue in a more manageable way. Ultimately, the legislature ended up adopting both of them. So so they 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 took the alternative of adopting both bills, but they're they're both in forms that the city, our city experts seemed to told us that they could they could live with how those bills ultimately ended up. A couple, there are many more bills, frankly, more than a dozen, that would be worth mentioning here that did pass. Couple that didn't pass that I think are even more important, House Bill 1380 regarding limitations on camping ordinances. And you may remember, there was a Ninth Circuit Federal Court decision called Martin v. Boise a few years ago that said that cities could not enforce camping ordinances, you know, prohibiting camping on on public property unless there was sufficient shelter space for all unhoused people in the city. That decision was overturned last year in the U.S. Supreme Court case of City of Grants Patz versus Johnson. And after that, some legislators who actually liked the original Martin v. Boise decision introduced this House Bill 1380, which would have basically reintroduced limitations on camping ordinances. That did not pass the legislature, but I can guarantee you it will be will be back, and certainly something for all local governments to keep an eye on. Similarly, House Bill 1195 has to do with what's called STEP Housing, supportive housing, transitional housing, indoor emergency housing, or indoor emergency shelter. The acronym STEP Housing is used for those types of housing. It would have prohibited a a a city's comprehensive plan or development regs from denying or precluding a permanent application for STEP Housing in any residential or commercial zone within most urban growth areas. Again, a a concern by many cities that basically the the state would be zoning statewide from from Olympia. Again, a bill that did not pass, but I can guarantee you will be back. So that STEP Housing discussion will definitely continue. And finally, on the housing front, a couple of items that relate to the the private sector, so don't necessarily involve what city governments regulate and what you all work on, your staff works on a day-to-day basis. But House Bill 1403 has to deal with with condominiums, and condominium reform has been a a big topic of of concern because the the state of Washington has some of the strongest implied warranties for condominiums in the entire country. And so this bill, 1403, is designed to ease some of those implied warranties in exchange for an express warranty that builders and realtors believe will help to encourage more construction of condominiums going forward. And that's supported by many people because it's an it's an it's an area of that, we hear of the middle housing a lot. It's an area of middle housing that's ownership housing, that helps people get equity and to build generational wealth. So there's a lot of discussion in Olympia about how to do more to get more people into ownership housing, into condominiums, as at very least as starter homes. And then finally, a a bill that probably got more attention than any other in the state legislature, with the exception of maybe the tax bills that that Jim had mentioned, the if you if you don't like it, it's rent control. If you like it, it's rent stabilization. House Bill 1217, similar to what was passed in Oregon and California, at at the end version, yearly rent increases are capped at 7% plus inflation or 10% maximum. And obviously, it's it's a, it impacts a lot of people because nearly 40% of Washington's population lives in in rental housing. So that was a knock-down, drag-out fight, literally went till the last day of the 105-day legislative session.
Gotcha. Councilmember Scarborough.
If Washington is 40%, what are California and Georgia?
They are largely the same, largely. I I'll I'll look into that, but I know that they're largely 40%. Yeah. There there's only a handful of states that have passed a rent control bill like this. Every state now, obviously, on the West Coast, and there's a few, few, New York. I think Jersey has, but I mean, there's there's only half a dozen states that have passed it. One quick thing, the 12-year exemption, that is from the certificate of occupancy, just in case there's a developer in the room who wants to know exactly when that starts. Go ahead.
So is is 40, is 40% about normal for the So is is 40? Is 40% about normal for the country?
I'll I'll be honest, I.
I I don't know. I'm gonna say that's that's probably. Let me look into that.
Okay.
Let me look into that.
Thanks.
You bet. You bet. And the next slide is really just a way of of wrapping up and introducing questions. And you can consider this to be inspirational or depressing, but there are only six months and four days left until the next legislative session begins. And so I'm sure we'll be working on the 2026 legislative priorities before we know it. But happy to answer any questions about any of these topics or any any others of interest to the mayor or the council.
All right. Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Councilmember Fisher?
AI on the Google machine says approximately 34% of households rent across the nation.
34.
AI of Google, so take it for what it's worth. Thank you so much for the presentation. A lot of great information in there. Yeah, I guess, you know, getting people more into ownership would be taxing them less at the state level might work too. So just my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I assume that there's not very stringent criteria around which cities Commerce can select to do audits of their.
There there isn't any limitation on the process Commerce may use to select those those 10.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you so much for the presentation. When we were in Olympia this year, I think we sat in on a session, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he was talking about RUC and about, you know, the road usage tax. And do you think that might come back and be explored next session?
Well, the the chair of the House Transportation Committee, who might have been the person discussing that.
Yes, I believe it was.
Representative Jake Fai.
Yes, indeed.
From Tacoma. He is a a big advocate for that, though he he certainly realized that there were not, there was not adequate support this year. But I certainly expect him to keep, you know, pushing that as a as a way moving forward to fund transportation. Though the the inflationary adjustments, the automatic inflationary adjustments, then that's been added to the gas tax, may take some of the pressure off in the short term. But as the state moves at to to Councilmember Scarborough's point, as the state moves more and more towards electric vehicles that don't use any gasoline.
Right.
At at some point, the the lines on the the chart are going to cross.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we, you know, it's kind of a discussion. And I'm just curious what your thoughts were on that.
I would just add, WashDOT in a quieter moment will tell you that as you and I are sitting here, they don't have, the technology does not exist for a statewide RUC program right now. Other things that they have that the legislature needs to go through is how it would apply exemptions you want to do for disabled folks, for enrolled tribal members that are driving off the reservation or on on tribal lands. There's a myriad of of issues that are legal issues that they still have to would have to work out as well.
I understand.
And I think the the big picture is that there there are no popular taxes or fees. So a lot of times what legislators try to figure out, which is the least unpopular within the whether it's the the RUC, you know, some states, I was just in in New Jersey, use turnpikes, you know, you're basically toll roads, fund a lot of the transportation system. Here, it's disproportionately gas tax. So that's what they are are struggling with.
Right. And I hope that there is some robust discussion about alternatives next session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Scarborough, I think you asked a question, how much does an EV pay per year? I think it's between 150 and 225 that is paid for with your car taps. But if you want to know for certain, I can I can let you know later. But it's, yeah, it's about 150 to to 225.
I know they were trying to find some of the burden, if you will.
Yeah. And and the EV should be paying to support the transportation network too. So, all right. Any other questions or comments? All right. I will say this, Jim and Luke, I won't be working with you next year. I've enjoyed the last couple of years working with you. You guys do a really good job of breaking things down in a very pragmatic way that I really appreciate. You keep things nonpartisan, which I really, really appreciate. And I have enjoyed, when I've had time, being able to meet with you on Fridays and just go over the bills. I think the staff also really appreciates the work that you do. So from my heart to yours, thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciated working with you.
Very kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, that's right. All right. Next item on the, thank you again. Next item on the agenda is consent. So I turn to the council. Councilmember Walker?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Beaumont, second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Beaumont. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble was not in chambers when the consent agenda item came forward for vote. Next, next item on the agenda is item 7.1. This is automated traffic safety cameras with Liam McCormell.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As the slide says, I will be talking about automated traffic safety cameras this evening. So we can go to the next slide. So just to give kind of an outline for what we're going to be talking about, we're going to start out with some background. I know you guys know a lot of this already. You've heard it a couple of times, so we'll go through that quickly. We'll then go into a review of the authorized locations. Where can we place cameras? Go into what is required by the analysis that we're compiling, go over the locational analysis results, talk about some of the considerations when we're discussing what locations we want to look into further, look into net revenue estimates based on those locational estimates, talk about next steps, and then finalize with some questions to consider. So just to preface this entire thing, as you're I'm talking and you're listening to what I'm having to say, the end goal here is we have 12 locations that staff have identified through our locational analysis portion. And what we're going to want to do is we're going to start to narrow down that list to the kind of core top priorities for locations we want to look to further as we're completing that locational or that analysis component. So we're very focused in what we are looking for. Oh, no worries. And now we can go to the next slide. So the background. So from 2007 to 2013, the City of Monroe did operate an automated traffic safety camera program. In 2007, we signed a contract with Redflex Camera Systems in order to operate a red light camera, two of them, at the intersection of US 2 and North Kelsey. In 2011, the city decided to extend that program into school speed zones, in which we operated a total of four cameras, speed cameras, in the Frylands Elementary and Frank Wagner Elementaries. So a total of six cameras between 2011 and 2013. In 2013, the city decided not to continue the contract with Redflex Camera Systems. Fast forward to 2024 summer, council asked staff to prepare a presentation regarding the potential for re-implementing a camera system in the City of Monroe. After multiple discussion, eventually, we got to ordinance 007 2024, which repealed the requirement for an advisory vote on any ordinance authorizing the use of automated traffic safety cameras. In November of 2024, council added automated traffic safety cameras to their strategic or five year strategic plan, with work on the locational analysis proportion occurring in 2025. In April, that work started, and that is what I am presenting today. So we can go to the next slide. So looking at authorized locations, this is also something we've discussed before. But just as a recap, the state law is very clear on where we are allowed to place speed cameras. We are allowed to place them in school speed zones. So those are areas within 300 feet of a school border or playground border, a school walk zones. Those are areas within a one mile radius around a school that are traveled by vulnerable road users who are traveling to a school. So that's pedestrians and bike users primarily. Public park speed zones, those are areas within 300 feet of a border of a public park. Hospital speed zones, areas within 300 feet of a hospital. And then finally, roadway work zones. So any roadwork that's going on for more than 30 days has the potential to put a traffic camera there to notify any violations in the speeding there. Outside of those locations, the city is allowed two, a total of two cameras, one per 10,000 population, to track speeding in various locations throughout the city. I would like to briefly note that for those kind of safety zones, so school speed zones, school walk zones, et cetera, the only time those cameras are really going to be able to tick it are during when those zones are active. So school speed zones should only be able to tick it while school is in session. Public park speed zone should only be able to tick it while that public park is open to the public. If they're going to be active outside of those timeframes, then that is going to count as one of our two other locations that we are we are counting towards. With that in mind, we'll go to the next slide. So that brings us to the required analysis, which is what we are beginning to talk about today. The state requires us, before we implement cameras into any location, to complete a analysis of each location, and that has two components, the first of which, which is primarily what we're discussing today, is the locational analysis. This locational analysis must demonstrate a need for cameras at each location based on either travel by vulnerable road users, speeding vehicles, rates of collisions, reports showing near collisions, or an ineffectiveness or infeasibility of other mitigation measures. Secondary to that, the city also needs to complete an equidary equity, excuse me, analysis of each location, which must consider the impact on components like livability, accessibility, economics, education, and environmental health. So combine these together, that completes the required analysis that we're required to contend with. What we are really focusing on today is that locational analysis component. Staff have completed collecting the data that would be required out of that locational analysis. And we're once again looking to narrow the results of the potential locations that that locational analysis gives us, so we can move forward with completing that equity analysis and looking into next steps to give you a full report and analysis of potential locations for camera placement. Next slide, please. So in April of 2025, staff began the process of gathering the data necessary to complete this locational analysis and develop a list of potential camera locations. So that has yielded us 12 potential locations, as you can see on the screen. This data or the potential locations were gathered through a plethora of locational data, including TomTom traffic statistics, which provided data on traffic volume via cell phone data, and also speeding. The Monroe Transportation Plan, which provided data on rates of collision, and then also comcade reports, which provided data on citizen concerns of specific roadway segments and areas. So we can look at this more in depth. I'm not going to hit on this too hard right now, but once we get to the discussion portion, I'm happy to move back to the slide so you can spend more time looking at it. It's also in your agenda packets, so it's all contained in there for you to review. Next slide, please. So this is a kind of summarizing the data into a graph form, in case you are more of a visual learner. This is looking at the speed data. So that coming that is coming from our TomTom data. And this shows the 85th percentile that is exceeding speeding limits. So that means 85% of the people are traveling at or below. It's really hard to see on the screen. But the orange is indicating the 85th percentile is between 10 to 15 miles per hour. And then the reds, which we have a little bit on State Route 522, Roosevelt Road, and I believe just a little dot on Lewis Street as well, that are over 15 miles per hour. So those are areas that you can that are clearly identified to have excessive speeding and would definitely qualify kind of that speeding component that would allow us to place a camera for the locational analysis proportion. Next slide, please. This one is showing the comcade cases. So these are the complaints that we're receiving. These are citizens who are typing into our system and demonstrating a need or a requested concern about specific roadway segments or speeding cameras. This is showing a plot of where those concerns are most frequent. Next slide, please. And then this one, which is also potentially a little small, this is coming straight out of our comprehensive plan, our transportation element. And this is really just showing the rates of collisions, where we are seeing the highest frequency collisions, where we are seeing pedestrian bike collisions, and then also fatalities as well. So all of that kind of synthesized into can be synthesized into a graphic to give us a visual form of our locational analysis as well. Next slide, please. So before we dive deeper into that data and discuss where we want to prioritize placing these cameras, there's a couple of important considerations. The first one is the number of cameras. Outside of school zones, school walk zones, park zones, and hospital zones, the city has allotted a total of two speed cameras. I want to emphasize that this means two cameras. It does not mean two locations. So potentially, if you have a roadway segment that is more complex, or you want to track, for instance, the southern end of the Frylands and the northern end of the Frylands, that's going to take two cameras. If you have more complex roadway segments like State Route 522 that has multiple lanes going in both directions, that is also most likely going to take two cameras to be able to track. So potentially, this might just come down to one location outside of school speed zone, school walk zones, park zones, and hospital zones, depending on the roadway segments that we end up choosing for camera placement. The other component to this is competing variables. When you look through that data, you know, we tracked potentials locations for camera placements based on excessive speeding, high traffic volumes, historic collisions, and citizen safety perceptions. But not all of those locations demonstrate a high need based on old data points. So if you look through the data, an example is Testa Road, shows the highest levels of excess excessive speeding of over 15 miles per hour in the 85th percentile. But it has the lowest traffic volume, only about 20,000 hits in our data. It has a low crash history and a low level of comcade concern concerns. By contrast, Lewis Street has a relatively lower amount of excessive speeding, but has a much higher traffic volume and also a much higher crash history. So there are competing variables that you have to weigh when you're we are analyzing what kind of locations we want to put and where placement would achieve the maximum amount of public safety. The other discussion to be had is the additional work that might be required out of some of these zones. So if we want to put places into what I have deemed safety zones, so those are school school zones, school walk zones, hospital zones, park zones, we first have to formally establish those zones. So that might require additional work by council. And we also it is also best practice that we integrate either the school district or the hospital in those discussions if we are placing cameras in those zones, so we make sure that our priorities are aligned with each other. And then once again, we have to make sure that if we are using those specifically for those safety zone purposes, that they're only active during the times when that would be applicable. The other bigger concern with additional work that might be required is if we decide to put cameras on any of these state highways. So that includes US 2, State Route 522, and State Route 203. Theoretically, placing cameras on highways is possible, and it's authorized by state law, as long as we're not putting them on on ramps or off ramps. However, any placement of a camera on a highway is going to require cooperation, agreements, and oversight by WashDOT, which was likely going to increase the timeline for us implementing these cameras. And ultimately, these camera placements are up to the discretion of WashDOT. And we have been told historically, we have been told previously, excuse me, that placing these cameras in these locations is pretty unlikely and is going to take a very long time to work with WashDOT to be able to fully implement. So when you're looking at that highway data, just be considerate that it's going to vastly extend the timeline. And in the end, it is ultimately up to WashDOT as to whether or not the city is allowed to place cameras on those roadways. With that, we can go to the next slide. So that brings us to net revenue estimates. I detail more kind of the mathematics behind this in your packets that you're free to go through. What this is showing is, so this this is assuming one camera looking at one segment of the road. This factors in to account the estimated court costs per violation. It also factors in the nonpayment rate. And also, what we see when we implement these cameras in other jurisdictions is it immediately decreases the amount of infractions that we're seeing as people learn that there are cameras there, which is something that all of this takes into consideration. What I would point out is that I denoted both a high estimate as well as a low estimate. What often we see is when cameras are first implemented, we will see a we will see the higher end of those net revenue estimates as people are still learning about the system and trying to adjust their mechanisms. And then over time, we will settle closer to the net revenue after four years low, most likely, as people learn and adapt to those to the roadway or to the the new cameras, excuse me. A quick note on the after four years. After four years, the state implemented a requirement that the city remit 25% of the excess revenues. So that's minus the court costs and the cost to run the program back to the state. So that's why after four years, we're going to end. So that's why after four years, we're going to end up settling at a very, very much lower amount. So something to note, the goal of this program is obviously not to generate revenue. The goal is to increase safety and reduce speeding. So seeing a net decrease in revenues over time, well, it is something to be aware about. It is actually a good thing, because it is meaning that our system is working and we are seeing lower rates of infractions over time. So that is just something to be cognizant about as you are choosing locations. Next slide, please. Okay, revenue uses. The state also restricts how we are able to use revenues. Use of revenues is restricted to, one, the cost to administer, install, and operate the cameras, including the cost of processing infractions. Outside of that, the excess revenue that we generate is restricted to certain traffic safety activities, including construction, maintenance, and operations. When we are spending this money, the city also must demonstrate a use of revenue in census tracts with households in the lowest quartile of the population. Next slide, please. So that brings us to next steps. So currently, we are looking at identifying potential camera locations based on that locational analysis data. If council decides that we want to look further into placing them on state highways, we will have to coordinate with WashDOT and see more fully what their process is for placing that in and begin drafting an agreement, if it's possible. If we want to look into adopting certain safety zone areas, cameras, we're going to have to coordinate with either the school or the hospital district and then formally establish those zones. If none of those are true, or if we complete that, then we will move up to complete the full analysis report, putting that all in a synthesized document for you, including the equity component. That will be presented to council, in which council will have the opportunity to finalize a location selection and then also do any necessary code amendments. So if they're outside any of the school zones, that is the only area our code currently allows, so we will have to authorize camera placement outside of school zones, if that's what council opts for. Following that, we'll move into the RFP and begin contracting with camera vendors, and that will lead us into the camera installation. So that gives us kind of an overview of where we are right now. Next slide, please. All right, and that brings us to questions to consider. So the first question I always ask is, should the city continue to pursue a speed safety camera program? And really, the core of what we're looking at today is the second question, which is based on that locational data. What location should mayor and staff continue to pursue to complete the required analysis? Once again, we have a list of 12 potential locations that was generated from that locational analysis data. We really need to narrow that down to the top two, three, or four locations, so that way staff is more focused and direct in the questions we are asking to complete that analysis, and we can complete that on time for council to review. So with that, I will conclude my report.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to see if I can dispense with the first question right away. Is there anybody that feels that we should not continue to pursue a speed safety program? Okay, so I think we've answered the first one. We should continue to pursue a speed safety program. All right, so the next question then is, what location should the mayor's staff continue to pursue to complete the required analysis? So thoughts from the council? Councilmember Walker.
Liam, this was a tremendous amount of work, clearly, so thank you to you and the other staff that worked on it. I'm still in favor of just sticking to the schools. The first ones to come to mind are obviously Frylands and Frank Wagner and Park Place for me, so.
Okay, just make a note then, Walker, schools. Okay, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you so much, Liam. I concur with Councilmember Walker on this. Couple things I just wanted to ask about. I'm wondering why we chose not to renew our contract with Red Flix in 2013. Why did we ever stop our traffic camera program?
Yeah, so a lot of that was in, a lot of that was in response to legal disputes that the city was having at the time, and the conversations that the council had was the best course of action, was to stop both the red light program and the speeding program and revisit at a later time.
Okay, and so here we are, all these years later. Our Imagine Monroe statement includes this verbiage, creating a safe place for all. So I think this is a really important program for us to pursue. City of Everett just released information on the results of its traffic camera program. Within two months of implementation in the spring of 2024, speeding infractions in school zones were reduced by 20%. So we know this works. I think it's really important that we also show our school district and our community that we are partnering with the school district, we're protecting our most vulnerable citizens, our youth as they're trying to make their way to school. So I think for us, it's a responsibility as well. And I know that, you know, does this pencil out? You know, I spent a lot of time looking at this because I care a lot about it, and it does require staff spending. It requires potentially hiring another person, but can we put a price on safety? Can we put a price on making people feel protected and safe in their community as they're getting to school? I don't think so. I think we need to do it. Thank you.
Okay, before I acknowledge the next person, we've heard two councilmembers express an interest in definitely covering the schools. Did I get that right? Okay. Is there any councilmember that would disagree with the idea that we should look at traffic cameras in school zones? And then like that, we can talk about the other zones as well? Okay, so I see a consensus from the council that we should look at the school zones for the final report. So. You want to, so we can go ahead, can we move back so that they can see the list of the zones? And then it was on the list. Yeah, okay. Is that it?
Keep going. There we go.
Okay, so it is on there, yes? Park Place?
Park Place, yeah.
Okay, so Park Place is on there. Kirk, good? Okay, all right. So hearing no objection, we will proceed with looking at the school zones. Now let's open this up to other potential locations, if anybody's interested. Councilmember Foultrid, I see your flag going up.
Yes, sir, you did. Now that we've cleared those other questions, because we're all going to agree on that anyway. 179th really needs to be addressed, but it looks like our best potential for that is the north of 154th. I feel like our problem is a lot of the south of 154th. Anyway, 179th is definitely on my wish list. And, okay, regarding Lewis Street, it is 203, and the other ones, 2 and 522, they're listed at the bottom. You're saying that is a possibility, but we would really have to coordinate with DOT, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, obviously, it's the big cash cow there, but I don't know if it's really one of our primary targets, though. I don't travel around the Walmart area very much. I would like people to give a little feedback on that, but I see another real, I wish Main Street was on here. I mean, there's a lot of speeding on Main Street, but I know that'll be addressed with the school zone, though. Yeah, Old Owen and Oaks.
Okay, so did I hear that Old Owen and Oaks? Okay, Old Owen and Oaks. Did you also want 179th?
179th is definitely an issue for me.
Okay, so 179th outside of the school zones, because the school zones are already covered, and Old Owen and Oaks.
And I would be interested to see if anyone else has some feedback on North Kelsey at Walmart.
Okay, sounds good. All right, other thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Liam. Great presentation, great information. We've heard multiple times from the neighbors on 179th, south of 154th, the second one down, leading right up to Park Place Middle. So I'd have to look at a map to see like how far 300 feet from Park Place Middle will go up 179th, but I think that definitely needs to be a priority. We've heard from the neighbors multiple times, so. I know it's part of the school zone, but then where does that end? And I feel like it should continue.
Right. The other alternative, if I can jump in, instead of a school zone for 300 feet, would be a school walk zone, so 179th is traveled by vulnerable road users, and that's within a one-mile radius of the school. So that's another alternative we can work.
Perfect. Yeah, in my mind, that whole, that whole area on 179th should just be, should qualify. And part of the reason is because those sidewalks are not developed, and so that's where there's more danger, so.
Okay, sounds good. So I hear Kevin and Heather both saying 179th to the council. Is there any objection to adding 179th to the study area? Okay. Okay, so 179th will be, we'll take a look at it, and it sounds like there are different ways, a school zone, walking, and also the hospital. So there's three different ways that that can get covered. All right, so Councilmember Hanford, done. Councilmember Fisher.
I had to put Woods Creek in there. I agree with everybody else.
Okay, and Woods Creek would qualify, would that be one of the extras?
That would be one of the extras. We were just talking about the schools out of the city limits, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we've got the school zones taken care of, 179th, the whole corridor, and then you've suggested Woods Creek, and there's a question on the Walmart area. So we can always come back to those if I don't hear from others. All right, so Councilmember Fisher, Councilmember Scarborough.
Well, one question is Woods Creek. Are you talking about past Oak Street, up Woods Creek to Fryland, or the housing area? It seems to me if you did a one-mile radius around all our schools, it'd take up just about any street you wanted to, between Monroe Middle, Frank Wagner Elementary, not the high school, but, and we're not looking at the two outside of town, if you will. Haven't we already put up some speeding mitigation bumps on 179th, and has that netted any changes there? I might ask whoever is traffic in Monroe. Jacob, I don't know if that's you.
I'll go ahead and pull somebody forward. Thank you. So, Councilmember Scarborough, you'll still have the floor. Why don't I go ahead and have Jacob come up and answer your question?
Sure.
Jacob, would you be able to answer that question?
Come on, Jacob.
So the anecdotal answer is yes, it has changed driver behavior substantially in the area, as anyone in this room may or may not have gone over those at 25. It's an experience, so I think people are slowing down. That is happening. As far as other traffic calming that's going to be happening in the very near future, 154th near Curryview Park, there will be a speed table that's going to be put in there. So those are programs that are in place now and have been in place for a very short period of time. We could get the council some data between now and when we come back through our same resource that we have with the TomTom data, and I think that might be informative as to whether or not a traffic camera in that specific area is warranted. To your question, Councilmember Hanford, I don't know if you remember, but the school zone sign was approximately a lot south of where we've heard a lot of the concerns on the 179th area there. I don't know if you recall where that sign was, but, so it'd be in the right area, anyway. Last little detail for you, Main Street is a 20 mile an hour zone. It does not currently have any school zones. I'm inferring what the council is asking for is to consider creating or recreating school zones on 179th along with the 20 mile an hour zone. So I think that that would be an important kind of caveat to what the council's asked this evening.
Okay, so did we adopt something that made all of Main Street 20 miles an hour?
You did.
And the bumps that we put on 179th, is that the kind of bump that's going to stay? Or are we talking about if it warrants keeping, we're going to do the hump? Because that's, that's not, that doesn't stop you down to 25 miles an hour, that stops you down to 10 miles an hour, and that's, to me, that's not acceptable. You want to slow people down at 25 to 20, fine. Slowing them down to go over those two kinds of bumps, to me, is not something I'm going to vote for. I don't think it's acceptable. So I'm assuming that that's a, something out there to tell us, yep, if we put something out there, it'll slow people down, and not what's going to stay out there permanently. Am I right or wrong?
It depends. So what we have done here is our first iteration of traffic calming, and the engineers chose a solution that was somewhat permanent and also potentially temporary, because it can be removed, rather than changing the structure of the road, which is far more costly. So if that's some feedback that the council would like to look at for the calming program in the future, we could certainly entertain that.
I think you just got mine.
Okay, so we can bring that back another time, because I think that would be another conversation point. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, anything further? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Councilmember Scarborough actually said exactly what I was hoping to, is that those humps, in my opinion, are awesome. I think they do their job really well. Solid positive feedback on them as well. I'm really looking forward, if we can get it, that TomTom data about what it does to speed trends, I think, is going to show that they'll be really productive. The spacing of them is even perfect as well, it feels like. I mean, you know that you need to slow down again before you come up to the next one. So I'm in favor of using those in the future for traffic calming, maybe for temporary situations. I would even be in favor of them being in place instead of the actual permanent sidewalk raising at Curryview Park. I'm sure that's a little late in the game to make that comment, but I think those are awesome. I just want to say, with regard to the cameras in the other locations, at the start of this discussion, I'm only in favor of these things being used in order to kind of teach people a lesson about speeding in school zones. I'm really not in favor of using them as a device around town. So I just want to be on record as saying I'm only for the school zones. I don't, I don't support them being extended to other areas of the city.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gimbell. No, I think you left that on from before. Thank you.
You know, the one that always gets me, though, is SR2, because it is an absolute racetrack through town, and we do not have an over, a flyway for people to walk over. I know before we had, they were red light cameras, and, I mean, the amount of red light running, it still is just, it's through the roof, but I, I don't know, I just, it's our highest transportation road along with 522. It goes right through, splits the town in two. I'd like to have some data. I mean, if we're going to be doing the research, and it's a ton of, like, a lot of that traffic are not residents, but they definitely are having an impact on our resident's safety. So for me, yes, I want the schools, that's absolutely number one, but it's also high traffic volume that's not residents, right? That are having an impact on the safety. That, to me, screams we should at least look at some data. Well, that, my two cents.
Okay, thank you. So that's one thing that I would agree with is also, I agree with a lot of what's been said here, but the red light cameras and, you know, along Highway 2, and I also know the speed zone cameras could be helpful. We've had a number of incidents that have occurred, especially at crosswalks, and having red light cameras there act as a deterrent for people that would try to rush through a light, try to make a right turn without paying attention to people in the crosswalk. It also helps to reduce the likelihood of, one of the things that frustrates me as a resident, you know, if I'm going to go from one side of Highway 2 to the other, I don't like it when someone is sitting there in gridlock, blocking our ability to just get across our town. So, you know, just looking at the council, I know nobody's brought that up. Is there an interest in looking at red light cameras, the indoor speed zone cameras along Highway 2?
You just brought that up.
Yeah, no, 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 I know you, yeah, so I know you just brought that up. The reason why I'm asking the question is right now, what I'm asking for is just, is there anybody that would oppose doing that? Because otherwise, we'll have seven people talking about the same thing. Does anybody oppose looking at that? Yeah, $66,000 plus installation, but. Go ahead, Councilmember McCorkle.
Yeah, so there are a number of costs associated with the program. The court has informed us that any sort of program is going to require the hiring of an additional full-time employee. There's also costs associated with processing infractions. That is estimated. That is estimated to be about $11 per infraction. And then, as the mayor mentioned, it's approximately $5,500 per month, per camera.
And then, the, the thing also is that right now where we are tonight is for the council to identify the areas that you would then look into to bring back a more final report. And so, right now, we're just trying to define the scope. These aren't final decisions, but he just needs to know what the scope of the work would be. And I would imagine that even though we'd be working with DOT, that we could still move forward on the other cameras while somebody's working on DOT, if after the final report, the council decides to proceed with Highway 2.
Correct. The one caveat I might add to that is if the city wants to include US2 as one of our only two other camera placements, or potentially two of our other camera placements, then we're not really going to be able to look at anywhere else outside of school zones or those safety zones. So, we just have to be very considerate if we want to look into US2, that that might take away our two camera possibilities.
Understood, okay, thank you. So, I guess just asking really quickly the council, is there, is there objection to looking at Highway 2? And I saw one, one hand go up. Does anybody else object to, to looking at Highway 2? Again, this is just for scope of what he's gonna look at, and he's gonna bring back a report. The red light camera, okay. Speed cameras, yes, red light cameras, no. Does, does anybody distinguish like he does between the two? Okay, so we'll add Highway 2, both speed zone and red light, as something for you to look at as part of the next part of the progression there. All right. Who have their flag up next? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
You brought up the, the count of cameras. How many total, like, we have a total count, right? It's not just locations, but is there a, a count element to it?
So, as far as the Washington state law is written, we can place as many cameras as we want, as long as they're in those kind of safety zones. Outside of those safety zones, we're allowed one per 10,000 population.
Okay, so then, it's the non-school or, or those qualified spots, and then you only get two cameras? So, any zone outside, if we were to do Woods Creek, you could only do one direction if you were to do another area around town?
Correct. The directional, the directional component gets a little bit more complex because depending on the camera vendor and what camera system we're choosing, and the complexity of the roadway, it might be able to monitor both ways. But potentially, it could also take two cameras. That's just something we have to look more into.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
And look into, like, the red light thing if we're going on, or the speeding cameras on Highway 2. Is there a difference going east and west with the state controlling that, and us controlling our roads that go across? So, I don't know, I think last time we had them, I don't know, pick, pick a street, Woods Creek going across Highway 2, or Lewis going across Highway 2. We could put them facing north and south, but not east and west, because the state had more control. They have control of that highway. So, that might be kinda something to play with. And then, with your comment on school safety and the kids, I, I'm for cameras not only in just school zones. I think it's important for us to not only protect our kids when they're going to school, but also when they're at home. I know living down in the Frylands and those areas, you live in a cul-de-sac or a dead-end road. I do not. I live downtown where everything is a main thoroughfare and a cutoff, but on, from 203. And there's not the sidewalk structure that you guys have. We just don't have it down there. So, it's important, I think, to also support the safety of our families, our kids. And the kids aren't the only people we would protect. And there's a lot of, you know, elderly people, there's a lot of disabled people, there's a lot of people that use our streets. So, that's why I'm for the cameras essentially anywhere.
Okay, so Councilmember Fisher, did you, did you have another location that you wanted to have?
I mean, I could throw one in there.
No, no, I, I'm just asking, because you, you've.
No, I was just kind of talking about the, to, to look into if we're allowed to control that intersection going north and south instead of east and west.
Okay, understood.
And then the other part was just a bonus.
Okay, okay, thanks. I think the areas that I've heard mentioned that I haven't heard a consensus on yet are Woods Creek and Old, and Oaks. Did I get that right? And also Old Owen and Oaks. And then also whether or not one is necessary at Walmart. So, just looking for thoughts on those as well as anything else. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble. I'm sorry, Councilmember Scarborough, thank you. And then Councilmember Gamble.
And Jacob, didn't we, isn't there something about completing the sidewalks on 179th? I forgot to push that question.
I should've stayed.
Yeah, just stick around, buddy.
Which segment of sidewalk on 179th?
All of it.
Yes, that is part of our, our transportation plan that we just adopted as a city. It includes adding sidewalks on 179th, the full distance. As it stands right now, just a reminder, they go from, as you're working from the north to the south. They go from 154th or Blueberry Lane to Main Street, and there's a full segment on the west side of the road. So, yeah, the next segment that's actually to be done is to lead down Blueberry Lane to the east to try to pick up the multifamily housing that's down there and give that safer route to school.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
So, Woods Creek, when I'm, I'm assuming it's because of people turning out on the, I guess that, I travel that one all the time. Yes, I'm not saying that there's not potential speed issues, but just from the standpoint of if you only had two, and if we were interested in that beyond the school zones, I would think there'd be some more higher traffic areas that would be more beneficial, that bigger impact from a safety perspective. That's just my two cents. Because there's a sidewalk that is all the way along there into the farm. I could see the benefit from, like, turning out, because I have to turn out onto that road, and it can be at times a little bit. But I'm just saying, if you only have two beyond the, that would be my two cents, and I travel it every day.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Jacob, don't leave, I have a question for you, thank you.
On cameras?
Yes, well, it's, it's combined. The pads that are on 179th in that section between Main and 154th along 179th, are we leaving those there? Are those permanent?
They are currently permanent, but they are removable.
Okay, but is our plan to leave them there?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless the council so chooses something different.
Okay, perfect. So, that mitigation is already slow, I know, because I've driven over them myself, and you're right. So, that's, that's great to know. So, that will impact, of course, that area. So, I, I like what Councilmember Hanford said about expanding that whole area and making it one big safe zone basically around Park Place Middle School. I had a question about Old Owen and at Oaks. So, can someone explain to me, I don't travel that area? What are we talking about there? What section of road is the speeding happening? If you could just walk me through that, someone that travels that area.
Go ahead, Liam.
I was just gonna say, Jody, if you wanna move to the next slide, it shows the map of kinda the areas, so you can get a better idea. It's a little bit small.
You able to zoom in?
So, is this turning onto Old Owen, like, off of 2, or is this Old Owen going into town? Oh, that's Oaks, okay. So, there's speeding going on back there. Okay, thank you, that's what I needed to know.
So, I'm not hearing a consensus then on Old Owen and Oaks, and so we'll just go ahead and drop that for now. I think we got what we need in terms of developing a scope. And let me just, I'll just ask one more question. Any other questions then, or thoughts on the cameras? Because again, we're gonna move forward with a scope, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Walker, on cameras?
Any rough timeline on when the next question around cameras might come up?
A lot of it depends if we're looking at the school zones and especially the highways, although we can look at those two separately, on how our communications go with both the school district and WatchDOD. So, my very rough estimate would be maybe two months before we can get you back a preliminary report.
I, I was just thinking, being that we're gonna have other conversations later in the year around budget and, and other departments, potentially the court being involved in, in some of those discussions. I'd love for that to precede the discussion around safety camera costs potentially being added to the court, so.
All right, thank you. All right, anything further on this item? All right, do you have what you need?
I think so.
All right, thank you very much, Liam, thank you very much, council. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that'll be council member reports, Councilmember Gamble. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So, I attended the UWC conference in Kennewick by myself. And it was, it was good. I was wishing that I had the flag, but the flag didn't come in time for me to do the, the parade of flags. So, maybe next year, so we can. It was good networking with other cities and, yeah, it was, it was very, very good. I, I think that's pretty much it, I'm looking forward to this ribbon cutting next week, so, long time coming. Fourth of July around our neighborhood was, I, I have to say, I, I was very pleased with our, the citizens around our house, anyway. It was dead silent for the most part, the, the night before, the morning of, until nine o'clock when it's legal, and then they had a few went off. And then, for the most part, most of the day was pretty quiet until the evening. So, I, I was, I was very happy with the respect that was shown by our citizens, so, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough. Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Thank you, Councilmember Foulter.
I also thought that it went a lot better on Fourth of July this year. I think a lot of it had to do with the education factor that we did as a city. So, I think, you know, hats off to you guys, that, that really seemed to work. I would like to propose that we extend our selling time a full week instead of just the four days. I think we have enough nonprofits that are making money on that, that, I don't know if any of you are interested in supporting me on this, but this is, I wanna look at a full week of selling, selling time for that.
Is there, is there a second to have this come back? Okay, we'll, we'll have staff bring back some information on that and for a discussion. Perfect, yeah. All right, Councilmember Walker.
Was out of town on the fourth, but it seemed, at least from feedback that I received, that it was a, a better year as well. So, I'm glad to, yeah, I, I think it was a, a good example of how it's able to go when people follow the rules. I attended the amateur ham radio event at Lake Tye, not this weekend, but the last, and it was awesome. They gave many compliments to the Monroe PD and Public Works Department for the cohesiveness and using the emergency response trailer. That thing is awesome. And I just wanna thank that group for what is, doing what is basically a, a public service and, and helping people stay up to date on those technologies, so, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I just, again, wanted to bring up how pleased I am to see the speed pads on 179th. That's been, actually, I know people that live there and have talked to them over the years about that area. And it's just so gratifying to drive down that street and see that we are doing something about it. And it's very visible, it does slow everybody down, and it just, is just, I'm very proud of the city. So, thank you, staff, for all of the efforts to meet the needs of these people that have come to public comment and written us letters. And that really shows that we're listening and we care. Last, not last week, but the week before, Councilmember Foulter and I traveled up to Everett Community College and attended the Building Bridges Summit 2.0. And that is the program that Nate Naring and Jared Mead have put together. And it was just a fantastic evening of celebration of that program. I don't know if many of you are familiar with it, but they are a Republican and a Democrat serving on the county council. And their whole effort is to build bridges between political parties. And instead of viewing the other person as an enemy, sit down and talk with them, find commonalities, and let's work together on moving forward and being productive. And one of the, you know, John Lovick was there, gosh, who else, lots of, it was just fantastic. But one of the highlights for me was Jackson High School students. They actually embedded themselves into the high school and did a project for the entire year in their civics classes, teaching them about civility and, you know, news sources and all of that. And one of the graduates of Jackson High School was a, a young woman named Anya Dumshin, the daughter of Osgard Dumshin, who's the band teacher at Park Place Middle School. And a personal friend of mine, and I've met Anya, and it was just a thrill. We looked at each other, it was like, oh, my goodness. But it was just a really worthwhile event, very well attended, saw a lot of our, our colleagues. And it was a great night for the two of us to go and listen, and, yeah, so that was great. Thank you for attending with me, that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Parks Department report, Jacob.
Good evening. The report is in your packet. Apparently, our operations and maintenance crews put some begonias on Main Street. I'm told those are flowers, I think some people enjoy flowers.
They're, they're plants, and they do have flowers.
Yeah, I'm told they're pretty, I wouldn't notice. In any case, so, they've done some really good work out there, and the medians look, look absolutely tremendous. The Pacer AI data is back up and working, you'll notice an update from May in your packet. And then also, the park board met last month with Administrator Knight. She did a wonderful presentation, walked them through the long-range planning, their roles and responsibilities, and also the city's strategic priorities. That concludes my report, Mayor.
What kind of soil amendments did they use for the begonias?
I just, I don't know.
Thank you, Jacob, any questions for Jacob? Our parks person tonight.
For now.
For now, all right, all right, thank you. City Administrator, Mayor and City Administrator reports. Deborah, extended agenda.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Looking forward to our next meeting on July 15th. We do have a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting scheduled. We have a number of items, including update from Mojo Strategies, review of our compensation structure, and a league adjustment policy. For the regular study session that evening, we have also a number of items. Public Defense Reduced Case Load Standards with Liam McCorkle. The Planning Commission Work Plan Review, that's coming back to council at council's request for a couple of additional items. Park Code Updates, and we are awaiting a proposal from the Housing Alliance of Snohomish County for an property acquisition that they're looking at in Monroe. And that's what we have for the meeting on the 15th.
All right.
For the 22nd, we do not have any items for the P3 Committee, and so we may be canceling that meeting. We'll send out a notice for council in advance. For the regular business meeting that evening, we have a number of, we have a presentation, excuse me, confirmation of the mayor's appointment for the Parks Director. And then consent agenda items, accounts payable, meeting minutes, payroll, an update to the anti-harassment policy, and a mid-year work plan update. For new business, we have a procurement policy update. House Bill 2015 Public Safety Sales Tax, this is just a, a deeper dive into that sales tax opportunity that was presented this evening from our lobbyists, and then administrative.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gamble.
I have just previously stated I probably will not be attending this next week.
Thank you. Any other questions or notes for the agenda? All right, thank you. That, that'll. That'll be up. All right, thank you. All right, City Administrator Report?
Thank you. Just a reminder that the Needs Assessment Survey for the Human Services Needs is currently open. We are, of course, are doing a ribbon cutting next Monday, the 14th, and then we will be entering into our August recess. We also handed out council surveys for the tour for the Correctional Complex. So, if you could return those to either me or Jody this evening, that would be helpful. There's a number of options for Tuesdays in August, and that tour would begin at 6:00 PM. So, we will let you know next week what date, if any, we were all able to come to some consensus on. Yes, you were gonna provide?
I just wanted to remind you to make sure that we want council to arrive a little early if they can for the ribbon cutting, so we can kinda walk through what the. for the ribbon cutting, so we can kind of walk through what the...
Did we have a slide to talk about the agenda or not? Not this evening? Okay. Still in flux? Okay. So if council members could arrive for the ribbon cutting next week at 3:30, that would be an opportunity, then, for us to walk you through the agenda for the evening and what your roles will be and the pictures. We're still trying to work with the construction site, so it'll be great to have you onboard a little bit early, just so everybody knows what their roles will be during that event.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
It will be open.
Councilmember Beaumont?
And we will wear our city branded clothing, correct?
If you have it, yes.
Yes.
That'd be great. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Any, any other questions for the City Administrator report? All right. Just a couple items on the mayor's report, then. One, I did meet with representatives from HASCO last week to talk with them about the proposal that you saw on the extended agenda. I did share some of the thoughts that I've heard from council in the past about housing. And so, just sharing with you that I did share with them just the importance of having market rate, housing that is affordable, and the importance of how we would like to see more homeownership, like condominiums and things like that. So we did have a pretty broad conversation, so just for your awareness. If you've got any questions about that, I'm certainly happy to talk with you a little bit more. The other thing, too, is for the, we've begun doing the work for the mid-by budget. So this is the amendment to the 25, 26 budget. We anticipate having the material to you at the very end of September or beginning of October for your consideration during the month of October to make any adjustments to the current biennium budget. And then, boom, boom. Lastly, yeah, really looking forward to the ribbon cutting next week. Understand this, that there's still some work that needs to occur on the building. As you are aware, you know, inspections get done and everything. And there are a couple of items that need to be completed. And the, that work may take a few weeks to get completed. So it is my hope that, first, we'll have the ribbon cutting next week. Second, it's my hope that we'll have our first meeting, hopefully in September, maybe the first meeting in September in council chambers. So it's a construction site, it's a very big construction site, and sometimes things get delayed, and some things need to, sometimes some things need to get adjusted after things get built. So just letting you know that there will not be a ribbon cutting, and then everybody suddenly has their desks at the new building. It's, we're still dealing with needing to move people in, potentially into September, so. Good news is, you don't have any meetings in August. So we'll have a couple more meetings here. And then, again, my hope is that the first meeting in September will be in there. Okay? And then, lastly, yeah, I, I understand that there are about 95 people who have RSVP'd for Monday. Looking forward to seeing all of you there. And this is... 96? Oh, did you just RSVP? We're really looking forward to seeing everybody there. There's been a lot of work on this. A lot of love has gone into this, this building. A lot of functional analysis has gone into it. And it's something that, when I started as a council member in 2003, I never thought that we would, you know, that I would see us actually completing it. So I'm, I'm really excited about that for next week.